Okay, good morning. I want to call this meeting of the Salt Spring Island Local Trust Committee to order. And I want to acknowledge that yesterday was National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Take a moment to reflect it. Indigenous people have been here, First Nations, various First Nations in the area, have been here since Tom and Memorial. Have a moment of reflection and respect for that. And we're... See, there's a lot of you have turned out today. And just for safety reasons, I just want to point out that there's a fire exit over here. I believe there's one there as well.
That door is locked.
That door is locked? Okay, that is not a fire exit. Do not attempt to move that. We have a fire exit over here. Just because I know where it is. There's a fair number of people here for this meeting. First item is the approval of the agenda. I was going to propose that we move the trustee reports up. Right after the approval of the agenda. We'll take it by general consent then. We can adopt the agenda as amended. So my name's Tim Peterson. I'm elected on Liskidi Island. I'm the Chair of the Salt Spring Island Local Trust Committee. With me is Trustee Patrick. Trustee Harris. Further down here, we have our Regional Director, Gary Holman, and the new Chair of the LLC, and I'm sorry, I forgot your...
LCC.
Earl.
Earl.
Earl. Okay, and thank you for joining us this morning. And our staff have our Minute Taker, Sarah Sugar. General Planning Manager, Chris Hudson, and Rob Higgin, our Administrative Services. And so with that, we'll start with the trustee reports. Would you like to go first? Trustee Harris?
Great. Well, thanks for such a great turnout here. It's really happy to see we've got some local Indigenous in the room with us today. So as far as my report goes, I generally keep this quite short, but I've got a couple of talking points that I'd like to mention today. Bylaw 530 is something that's pretty big and on everybody's mind, and we've had a couple of open houses regarding it. It's legalized suites and cottages to a great extent in the island. At a recent open house, we had downstairs at the Legion, there were some folks that weren't too happy with how I was speaking there. They figured I was talking too loud and maybe too passionately. But this bylaw is about housing for our workforce. I'm a member of the workforce. I'm working class. And, you know, I rent here on the island. I'm not a landowner. So I am passionate about this bylaw, and I really, it's just a drop in the bucket when it comes to addressing workforce housing issue that we have. You know, I have kids that, you know, I hope that they're going to be able to feel safe and secure in a future here. My friends, many of them in the same boat. Sons have wanted to attend this morning, but they couldn't because, you know, they need to go to work, pay the bills. So, you know, I spoke passionately about it at the open house and got into it with a couple of people. And one was saying, well, you know, it's a, there's a bigger picture here that you need to look at. And so I said, what is that? And they went on to say, well, you know, we're going to have less water in the future. It's about water. We don't have enough water. And so I went on to say, well, how about looking at Bermuda? It's an island that's a similar size to Salt Spring. And they have forty-something-plus-thousand people there. And no real great source of fresh water. Fifty to seventy percent of their water comes from rainwater. And desalinization is used at a grand scale. They went on to say, well, you know, they figured I knew nothing about what I was talking about and that I must be some kind of an idiot because Salt Spring is clearly much smaller than Bermuda and it's a much larger island. So I thought, well, I was kind of taken back. I thought, well, maybe they're right. Anyways, when I went home, I Googled it, and lo and behold, I was wrong. But only in the fact that they're not really a similar size. Bermuda is actually much smaller than Salt Spring Island. And there's more than forty-five thousand people. There's over sixty-five thousand people on Bermuda. And it's a, you know, has a tourist-based economy there, and they seem to be thriving. And not to think that we're ever going to have sixty-five thousand people here anytime soon or in any foreseeable future, but I think the point is that we have clearly more than enough water here to facilitate some workforce ownership housing projects, as well as, you know, pass this bylaw 530 and feel completely confident in it and that it's meeting the official community plan. And we can feel good about it. And that's without us even looking at storage or rainwater at a large scale when it comes to our fresh water. It's a shame. We have some NGOs promoting some false information, the sky-swallowing type of narrative, which has had a, you know, really a negative impact on our community's social well-being. Driving climate anxiety and driving polarization. Real people are suffering from this housing crisis. And again, this bylaw 530 is at least a start. It's a drop in the bucket of what we really need to have done, but it's a start, and I really support it. And I will continue to talk passionately about these things, whether I'm trustee or not, and I will never apologize for doing so. Second on the list for this report, and we had a great educational session regarding the range and extent of our forest biogeopolimatic zones that the Island Trust falls in. There's been some contention over that with governmental organizations and non-governmental organizations and community special interest groups that have been promoting false information as to the range and extent of our forest zone. There was the fellow who, one of the fellows who developed the biogeopolymatic classification zones was, you know, hired on for this educational session for trustees. I hope staff can actually access the recording of it because it would be very advantageous, I feel. The two zones that we fall under, one is the Coastal Western Hemlock Zone and the other is the Coastal Douglas Spur Zone. It has been said by governmental organizations and non-governmental organizations in the last few years that, you know, it exists, our zones exist nowhere else but here, nowhere else in the world. And we've, I've been arguing it with others that this simply isn't true. And so a big success with this educational session. The fellow who designed it specified clearly that our zones extend way down into Oregon and actually the bulk of the CDF, even the sub-zone which they're, which we are in, which is hard to grasp, I understand, but this Coastal Douglas Spur Moist Maritime Zone is also located in Oregon. It could be another sub-zone, but enough studies, studies haven't been done enough to confirm that. But as it stands now, that's the same zone as that we are in now. So definitely, this zone is much greater than just in the IT area. The Douglas Spur forests, not just a zone, are actually located in Northern California. And so this narrative that's stating we need to, you know, come up with all these heavy environmental policies because we live in such a rare area, it doesn't hold as much water, with myself and many others, and I'll continue to argue that fact.
Mr. Chair, can someone from the floor bring up a point of order?
Um, no.
Well, I suggest that you follow the agenda timeline.
Well, thank you for that. We did amend the agenda to get trustee reports right now. Thank you for that, and I believe trustee Harris is probably getting close to...
I'm getting very close to the end. So again, a big success with that forestry educational system. It'd be great if the public could access that, too. I'm not sure if that's possible, but it'd sure be nice. We also had a, you know, kind of an interesting thing happen a week or so ago. We had a protester nude out in front of the Island Trust Office. I don't know if anybody's heard about that. Protesting, they were quite upset with the bylaw enforcement actions that they were, was involved with them. You know, it does sound funny, I realize, but it's serious as well. And we are looking at what's happening with bylaw enforcement and something we take very seriously, and we're hoping to make some movement, you know, hopefully having a closer look at the system and, you know, hopes of getting to the bottom of some of these complaints and protests that have been going on. But with that, over to you, trustee Patrick.
Reminder, everyone, that should be done this beginning. Yeah, for the sake of this meeting, and this will also pertain to the public town hall session, no clapping, no booing, for, clearly for the same reason. We don't want anyone booing, therefore we don't want anyone clapping. Thank you.
What about nudity?
No nudity, please. That should be done in the privacy of your own home or at an appropriate location. Trustee Patrick?
I think it must be lecture day, because normally I say, I'll follow the meetings I attend. I did attend a lot of meetings, but I'll bury them that. I'm not going into those details. I also get a bit frustrated. I get portrayed as being anti-environmental and a developer in the press, and I can tell you that is not me. And I know it's easy to take shots of the elected when you're on that side of the table, but I want to talk a little bit about what the responsibilities and what I have on this side of the table. We do have an official community plan that was updated in 2008, and it contains a lot of good statements, and it needs to be taken as a whole. In general, the OCP does envision a diverse community living within the constraints of an island. It does envision that choices will have to be made and that limits may be needed on some forms of housing. What I don't understand is how the conversation has evolved over the years to think that the limits of housing options need to be applied to those that serve the middle and lower ends, while the housing spectrum, while the upper end continues virtually unrestricted. Nowhere in the OCP does it tell us who gets to live on the island or not. So I'm in the scene. It's my job to have to be able to interpret the OCP. Back in 2008, trustees Peter and George did approve the OCP that we currently have, and they did a good attempt to try to involve everyone they could in creating it. In 2009, trustees George and Christine received a Housing Needs Assessment. It predicted a steady increase in population for the next thirty years. Said while the annual increase, increases are not particularly large, an overall increase of thirty percent is fairly significant and will have long-term planning implications for not only housing, but all forms of housing related to infrastructure and services. The 2009 Housing Needs Assessment described the substandard housing conditions that make up the secondary rental market. That's where we ran. It said that the key informants confirmed these findings, that the housing supply is in poor condition and very expensive. They expressed widespread distress about conditions that many people are forced to live in: no plumbing, running water, heat, et cetera, mold, rats, isolation. Several informants talked about slum lords or the equivalent as the serious problem on Salt Spring. The category of exploitive landlords was reported to include some who are also preying on young women and other vulnerable people. So the trustees of the day received that report. And they did get a working group established with the CRD, and they did create a housing strategy in 2011. That's where trustees Peter and George II came in. And in 2013, they succeeded in getting one of the actions from the strategic plan implemented, and that was an area of about fifteen hundred secondary suites were established. But in 2014, where Salt Spring had the water moratorium, which pretty much wiped out that entire map of fifteen hundred secondary suites. In 2017, they initiated working on a second action, which was the full-time rental cottages. In 2020, about four hundred and fifty of those lots were selected to allow rental cottages. I'm in the picture at this point, and I voted against that because I thought a map-based, you know, four hundred lots across the island was not going to do anything. So here we are today. I'm not going for growth. Growth is happening, pretty much as predicted, bang on to that 2009 Housing Needs Assessment report. And this growth has only put more pressure on the miserable housing conditions, as described in that report, that our workforce is experiencing. I hope that we can get a version of some accessory dwelling units that will facilitate some islanders, housing islanders legally. I want this, we have an OCP project that we're about to start, and I want this project to really be a turning point for this. This is an opportunity to create a proactive planning project that truly sets us on a path to be prepared for the next twenty years. This is our chance to ensure all voices are represented in the community planning project that serves a diverse community. As leaders, we need to make sure this project is resourced. We need to be here to support our Island Trust staff so that they can be creative and innovative. And this is a real opportunity for further reconciliation by embedding Indigenous Relations approach into the aspects of this project. So I look forward to the next stages, and I really hope that we can work closely together as a community and be on more solid ground going forward. That's my report.
That. And for my chair's report, I'll be very brief. On June 20th, the Island Trust Conservancy announced the new Livingston Forest on my home island, Liskidi Island. Eleven point three-five hectares, forest and wetland, important habitat for a species including the red-legged frog, western toad, and the little brown mites. So we're happy that's the first version of the Island Trust Natural Protection Area Tax Assumption Program to take place on Liskidi Island. Happy to see that there. At Executive Committee, we've been focused on planning for next week's Trust Council meeting, which is on Diarola. The first time we'll be back on the islands since March of 2020, when we met here on Salt Spring. So looking forward to that. We're going to have a session on reconciliation with Frank Mueller from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. We'll be working on a SWOT analysis and some interim strategic planning to carry us over through the next, into the next fiscal, while the new corporate plan is sort of finished, I guess, and approved by council, which is a new direction for Trust Council. I'm excited to see how that unfolds and hopefully provides efficiency and more clarity and a better planning process than we've had in the past. So I'm going to leave it at that, and we're going to have the CRDs report at the normal section, which will be after delegations today. So the next section is the Town Hall section, and there's a lot of people here, so I'm going to, I'm going to be using a timer and requesting that you all stay brief. And when we hear the timer go off, please, please wrap it up. Also want to remind you that we want comments that are pertinent to the issues here. Please do not address personalities or individuals. You stick to the issues, use respectful language, and this is also a workplace for staff. And so I'm going to, I'm going to look for a show of hands here in a moment, and I'm going to give everyone a really brief, yes?
Sorry, Chair, I'm just wondering if we could have our report. I'm going to have to go. Not sure if Earl, but just wondering if you could briefly give our reports, and then you can go into your...
We all have to go, Gary. Yeah, you're not the only one that has to go. I have live chicks at the post office right now, so I'm really happy.
Okay, well, yeah, I actually had just contemplated just moving up the trustee reports, and that's what we agreed to in the agenda, so sorry about that, Gary, but we'll get through this as fast as we can reasonably can. So I'm going to look for a show of hands of people who want to speak. Okay, quite a lot. So I'm going to start back in this corner, and after each speaker, I'll just, I'll just continue moving across the room this way. So if you'd like to start, please?
Before I go, on the agenda, the delegations are already on the agenda.
Delegations is after Town Hall, a question.
So all of this first.
Yeah. Okay, so please go ahead, and you've got two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm here to speak with respect to the application that comes up this afternoon relative to the cannabis store application. My name is Bert Hick, President Rising Tide Consultants. I'm a former General Manager of the Liquor Control Licensing Branch, now the Liquor Cannabis Regulation Branch. I, for the last thirty-five years after being General Manager and consulting in the hospitality industry, we got into licensing cannabis stores when the federal government legalized it. And I wanted to speak to this application for a cannabis store. My submission to you is, I recommend you deny the application for following reasons. Number one, it's not a great location. Its location is close to the park, close to the marina, and it's close to the school, and it's not a great location. When you have a cannabis store, the best location to have it is in a commercial area, close to a grocery store, drugstores, other like-minded stores, not in this location. The other concern I have is, I just don't think Salt Spring Island has sufficient population to merit two stores. The basic thumb rule in cannabis is, you have to have a population base of cannabis users in the area to use it. Now, according to the statistics, your island has a population of about eleven thousand people, plus the tourist bump. You take that out of that, the minors, so it brings it down to about eight thousand people, who would be adults. Then statistics, BC, show that the average use of cannabis in British Columbia is about thirty-two percent of the population. So you break that down, you don't have sufficient population to really support two stores. And we find this with other municipalities around the province where the provincial government opted out on the citing of stores and the approval. All they want to make certain is that somebody's a fit and proper person or a suitable person to have a cannabis store. It's up to the municipality. We've got situations now with municipalities such as Nanaimo, Victoria, Kamloops, Vernon, where they're just saturated with cannabis stores, and they're not out business all around. We just don't have enough cannabis smokers or consumers. So quite a few stores are closing down, being sold off at fire sale prices. In addition to that, the BC government, which has their own government cannabis stores, are reassessing their situation and going to be closing stores in markets like Kamloops and other places because they are not doing well. They're not making money.
Can I ask you to sum up, please?
Yeah, sure. And the other thing you have to recognize is, this area has a substantial black market. It always has, always will. And that black market endures, and if you have too many private stores, they go down, the black market thrives. So there you go.
Thank you. Next, back in the court, so, yeah, you'll be next, yeah?
Hello, my name is Ali George. I am actually an employee at Harvest Moon Cannabis, so I'm here speaking on the same matter. He pretty much took my thunder there. He pretty much said everything that I was going to say, so thank you, but probably eloquently. I actually do have, I have seen this business live, and I'm really excited. I've lived on this island since 2007. I have a vested interest in local businesses doing well, so I did feel some conflict in hoping that a business was denied, but we already have this business that's been doing really well, but we are a newer business. I have seen from a lot of customers that they were surprised that we were doing well because of the black and gray market. There are a lot of people who have their own guy, or they go to the gray marketplaces. We're doing well despite this, but as you said, if we have another location in here, it's just, it's, it would be a saturated market. And beyond that, I am very grateful to Country Grocer and the larges for what they provide for this community. If we went under, everyone that works at Country, I'm sorry, at Harvest Moon would lose their benefits. We get thirty percent off at the liquor, sorry, the grocery store. And I feel proud to be a part of this business. I don't want to see it go under. I've seen what it can do for the community, actually. It's very fulfilling work, and I wouldn't want to see it go under because of, it wouldn't be friendly competition. It would just be competition because we're already competing against the black and gray market. And I don't like seeing business siphoned off in those directions because then you're getting into areas where things aren't as regulated and people are having, would be forced to buy products that perhaps aren't good, or, you know, they're not regulated enough. They should be getting edibles that perhaps are twice the strength or three times the strength. I enjoy seeing a place where people can go and get CED that they know is good and will help them. I don't want people to have to go to black or gray market because the business has to go under. So I, too, wish this to be denied because we already have a business that is doing really well and doing a lot for the community.
Okay, thank you. And there's the other candidate here in the back there?
Yeah, my name's Julian Clark. I'd like to suggest for future meetings, you might put delegations before the Town Hall. I'm here to support the delegation that's coming to speak about the Clean and Safe Harbor Initiative. But I know that after the delegation, I won't have an opportunity to state my support. But I do want to say that when people listen to Glenn Stevens and the delegation on the Clean and Safe Harbor Initiative, it is a pro-housing initiative. All the things trustee Patrick spoke about, the slum lords, the exploitive landlords, the unsafe living conditions, the inability to access clean water, the inability to access a place to put your garbage and your sewage, all of those things exist today in our harbor. And if we can deal with that and address those issues, we're going to find that there may be a solution to housing here if we can put our shoulder behind it. So for all those folks to think when Glenn speaks on his delegation that this is an anti-housing issue, you're dead wrong. It's a pro-housing issue. Thank you.
Okay, and...
A next, maybe?
Yes. My name's Rick Tyson. I'm a recovering drug addict. I support cannabis stores. I do not support the location of where this application is for the same reasons this gentleman spoke of, but one thing he did miss was the library. It steps away from the library. I believe that people, where there's smoke, there's fire. Ganges is a tourist hub, and I think families have, should have the option to seek out that if they, if they would like, but also stay clear if they like. And with Ganges being so close, the bakeries there, coffee shops, choices, I just don't feel it's a great location. Thank you.
Okay, and still in the same area?
Oh, you? Yeah, okay. Yeah, my name is Jennifer McLean. I'm here to speak out against the Safe Harbor Initiative. I don't think that Glenn Stevens or anyone from that initiative ever met anybody on the houseboats or went on any of the houseboats, and maybe when you do your delegation, you can explain how you consider that you actually consulted with the community. I was on the houseboat with a very, very beautiful houseboat. It's actually been featured in a coastal magazine, and I met the other live awards. The people there are, it's a lot of people saying that the people are just kind of like bums. I've already known because I work at Thrifties. Many of the people who work at Thrifties live on the water, and if it's put stress on them, then it's really hard on our economy. Like, we already don't even have enough staff to mostly keep the store running. And this is a way that people are able to have housing. There's a lot of discussion all the time about building more housing, but the first thing should be done is don't displace those people who are already housed. Don't wrap yourself up into something kind of strange, like what happened with Seabreeze. That's a bit strange because they didn't end up passing the injunction against the tenants that just came out yesterday. So a lot of these things have deeper ramifications that are then decided in court. It caused a lot of trouble for a lot of people, a lot of displacement, and I think the language around it, like even when Julian's talking, I never saw Julian on any of the houseboats. So it's kind of like claiming...
I just want to remind you that please not...
Oh, so sorry about that. Anyways, I'm probably done. That's all I really wanted to say. It's just that there's a real gap between, without personally mentioning the names, there's a huge gap already in the community, and then when you have people claiming that they've consulted people and they've never even met them, and I know that... claiming that they've consulted people, and they've never even met them, and I know that personally, and I, it's just, you know, gonna add to this trouble. Like, you have to have real consultation. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. In the back there?
Hi, good morning. My name is Mark Ray Draper, and, uh, I, I work with the, um, the management company that provides administration and accounting services, uh, for Harvest Moon. Uh, so I am here to speak regarding the application for the cannabis store at, uh, one oh nine McPhillips. Uh, just a little bit of my background. I'm a, a tariff accountant and business valuator. Uh, you know, probably clearly I've worked on, on hundreds of business valuations and projections for different companies and startups of companies. And, um, you know, I think what we're seeing here is the liquor control and cannabis branch, um, you know, as Burin had mentioned, has, uh, you know, given responsibility for, um, the approval of stores to municipalities, unlike what they've done with liquor stores where, you know, they, they control the, the number that are, that are out there. Um, unfortunately, that has resulted in, you know, over saturation in some markets. Uh, in this particular market, I would say that market just is not big enough to support another store. Um, you know, right now, we've established a business that, that is viable, uh, is earning a modest profit, that will hopefully, you know, pay back the, uh, the original investment over the next few years, and is employing, uh, you know, a number of people. Uh, but I know that, you know, if, uh, sales were, were half what they are now, that is not a viable business. Um, it would not break even, it would not be profitable. And, uh, and, and both stores, uh, would, would suffer. So, uh, you know, the proponent coming in, as, as well, a store would suffer. Uh, it doesn't really, uh, you know, improve the, the competitive environment in terms of, of pricing and that sort of thing, because the pricing is very controlled by, uh, the, the LCRB. I mean, they've got their own, uh, stores, they have, uh, online sales, and, uh, you know, we also have, as was mentioned, the black market. So, uh, for those reasons, I would recommend that it not be approved.
Okay. And, further hands along the side. Right by the door there?
Just back to the housing, housing issue. You know, we've all heard stories about young people can't afford to live here, they can't get a place to live, old people can't find a place to live. What's a real problem, and it's all of ours in our room, is jobs are not getting filled, because people can't afford the rent over here, and they can't find a place to rent. So, anybody in this room that thinks they're going to a hospital that's gonna be guaranteed to be open, because there's nurses, lab techs, doctors, that may not be the case. Everybody's gotta think together to how to expand and fix this, not trying to block it, and not my backyard. That's the only thing.
Okay. And, yes?
Um, I'm not gonna be long-winded. I just wanna say that I've been a mild-er for thirty-five years, and I am opposed to the pot, the new pot shop, because I think we have enough weed around on Salt Spring to start off. And, uh, what do you call it? Uh, Country Grocer at least gives back to the community. I don't know about the new people, I don't know them. But, we have one pot shop that the, the owner gives back to the community, and I think that's good enough.
Okay. Uh, yes, and, ready, sitting down?
Oh, uh, hello, my name is Tammy Moulton. Um, I've been on Salt Spring for twenty-five years, and, um, I am also opposed to, uh, the application for the new cannabis store. Um, I do feel that, uh, it is such a small island that we do not need two government, we only have one government liquor store, we only need one government cannabis store. Our population is not big enough to, to honor that. Uh, plus, I don't see this person or this company, uh, being of the community like-minded, um, way that Harvest Moon has been, um, within our community. Uh, they do give back quite a bit in our community, and I just feel that, um, it's gonna help us lose jobs within our own company. And it will also, it, the location is a terrible location. The two businesses that are beside this location are stressed out enough about the fact that this is even a, an issue, or this is even a possibility. Um, I think it should be denied, and that's...
Okay, and then right behind?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to two issues. I'll touch briefly on, uh, the new, um, pot shop application. I think if any more people get in that market suddenly, the other few I'd like to talk about, and that's the lack of affordable housing, because of nobody... There'd be more people looking for affordable housing. There's not enough citizens to go around for that. The second one is towards, um, the five thirty, um... I, I live within the capture zone that's created for the pilot project for Radiske, which was then blocked because of, um, the water we don't have. I think, um, the idea that not having enough water here is, I just don't think that's accurate. That's the thing. If we directed the money now, we're spending on enforcement towards solutions to have more than enough water, and probably, like I've been in two situations, where through satellite imagery, enforcement officials have shown up. One time a farmer appealed to arrest a tarp, which is put there for weed control. This only identifies the shape and not the actual structure. The other one was a, a small cabin, or shed, was being liberated from the black areas and repaired, and they zoomed in to see if someone was planning to inhabit it. Um, that kinda money would go a lot, it'd get a lot more mileage in finding solutions to the problems, and maybe that should be redirected. The place I live in, I'm not allowed to, uh, have a suite. I'm not allowed to operate a boarding house. It's a three-bedroom house, and I live there by myself. My alternative, as long as I live in the house, is to legally operate a V and V. Is that what I wanna do? No, I'd rather have a separate suite that people can live in. And I don't think me living in the lower level, with a hot plate and a toaster oven compromises any security. It's reassignment space, it's not creating more space. And there's a lot of people in that, in that category, where they moved here with family, kids are gone, and they're in a big empty house. We have, the people are already here. And if you wanna give them substandard housing, you could go down by the bank any morning and find milk trucks and motorhomes and trailers in Munich with people in it. At least if, um, there's a policy in place with proper monitoring, then I just see it as a win-win, not a lose-lose.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes?
Um, my fam, my name is Sherry Nisho, and my family has lived here since the mid-seventies, and I also disagree with the planning for the new pot store. I agree that it's all about the location, and, um, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. And, continuing this way, in, in the back there, uh, yes?
Uh, I was here to speak about the Safe Harbor Initiative. Uh, it seems to me there's, there's several layers to that conversation. I'll back up. My name's Chris Small. My family's lived on the island for about forty years. Uh, I've been a Marine, served air my, my entire career, almost forty years, so I have some familiarity with vessels out there, and with various, uh, issues at play. But I think, uh, to separate the issue into some categories would be useful. Uh, just reading some of the responses online to Glenn's initiative, uh, there's a lot of conversation about, you know, people living aboard who haven't been properly consulted, et cetera. So, I think we could spend a lot of time on that conversation, rather than just focusing on whether it's a campground or a, a multi-unit condo complex. You can't release all your sewage out the door and hope it goes away. That's happening in the harbor, because it's out of sight, not in mind. So I, I think, focus down on some solutions for some of the key issues. You could still create some housing, allow the people there to live in a safe environment, with a few rules to support it being done in a sanitary and safe way. And then move out from there as to what enforcement's gonna look like, or what all, you know, the other issues are. So, uh, basically that's the gist, which I had to say. Focus on, and break it apart, focus on the issues, uh, prioritize what the impacts are, and I think with some creative thinking, collaboration, you can provide housing and address the negative aspects of what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And, continuing this way, uh, right against the back wall there?
Hi, my name is Sherry Goldrow. I'm the chair of Dragon Well Housing Society, and we are the owner-operators of the Longner Map in Salt Spring Island, suburban stage. We live right downtown. Downtown is not a safe place to be these days. If you're marginal, don't have a place to go, just arrived here, there's all kinds of situations out there right now. But we believe the situ, uh, the pot store proposal for downtown Ganges is silly. That space needs to be a drop-in center for mental health, peer support, something where people can network, solutions for their lives, where people can drop in and have coffee. It's a walking around Ganges all day long. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yes?
I'll keep it short. Joe Clemente, parents bought here back in the seventies. I've been here for over thirty years, retired from CRD, worked at Country Grocer part-time. And she took the words right out of my mouth. There's already two pot stores in town. It's a small town, walking distance. We have Harvest Moon, which is regulated, other country grocer. We have the one downtown. We don't even, we don't even have a pot store. I just put my two bits with it.
Okay, and next?
My name is Liam Yilvery. I will also keep it short. I don't think we have enough of a population for two cannabis stores on the island, right between the guy, the new proposed cannabis store. I also think, like Sherry said, like, almost everybody said, it's a, you know, it's a really bad location. We already have enough going on downtown. Can't even take my kids to the park. We don't need more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, continuing this way, yes?
My name is Maxine Nyter, and I wanna say first of all, it's great to see so many people here. I wish we had more people like this more often. I agree with the people who don't want a pot store. I agree with people who want something done about the harbor problem. It's just unacceptable to add human waste and garbage washing up on the shore. It's, uh, bad for our tourist economy, and it's disgusting. Uh, and we need to address the fact that these people have no place to take their, uh, waste in the length of months, I understand. So, please take a really good look at what's being presented to you, and I'm hoping we get on the list of projects. The other thing I wanna talk about is Bylaw Five Thirty, which you might all know I'm very much against. And I wanna say in response to this, uh, uh, mention of Bermuda, if Bermuda's smaller than Salt Spring, and has sixty-five thousand people, it probably has very little natural environment left. And that was supposed to be the purpose of the island's trust, partly to preserve our natural environment. Also, in Bermuda, it rains all year long, on and off, so water catchment is feasible there. You don't have a long drought like we do. I wanna say that this bylaw, we're gonna address affordable housing, should be based on research and data. And I'm gonna read you some information that we found about that. There was an article in The Guardian on June six, that England has the same problem we do, that they don't have enough housing. And so, they built a lot of housing there, and the follow-up research was that in communities like bars that are tourism-based and attractive, uh, the housing was almost completely negated by the purchase of housing for vacation rental and second homes. The other information is from Patrick Condon, who's the chair of the Urban Design Program at UBC, and has a new book out on this, this subject. He is quoted in the Vancouver Sun as saying, "Been in many areas, especially the pot housing markets, ADUs tend to benefit of the wealthier white homeowners, not low-income, et cetera." Uh, fortunately, just one second. Unfortunately, authorizing new density doesn't help. What it does is increase land prices. Prior to the building of new buildings, at the end of the day, the price per square foot of the tourist base stays roughly the same, because the market for real estate is not governed by the price of land, but how many square feet you put on that land. So, this bylaw may be just a few legal rentals, but in the long term, it will do a lot more harm than good. And we will have many letters coming in to you with this type of information. So, please think about this.
And, I'm, I'm gonna go, uh... Yes, right here.
Okay. I wanna speak to Bylaw Five Thirty and also the Clean Harbor Initiative. Some of you may know that my wife and I were liveabords, uh, for ten years in a harbor. And I know that there was a way to accommodate a liveabord, and to accommodate the, uh, Clean Harbor Initiative. The way we did that, we advocated with, uh, the city council in Santa Barbara, that we did not, as liveabords, want to live in a cesspool, and we desired the regulation. And the regulation that we needed was, they had dye tablets put in our toilets, so that it would be very obvious if anybody flushed a toilet into the, uh, into the harbor. Another thing was that there was a harbor patrol there that could actually enforce it. So, enforcement, uh, the appearance of pollution are the two key items there. Also, the people that benefited from living there paid a fee to pay for the regulation. So, there's a way to accommodate everybody, and nobody wants to live in a cesspool. On Bylaw Five Thirty, I think it's become apparent that a great many people on Salt Spring don't want diversified or dispersed housing. First Nations have spoken very strongly about this, that we want the housing, it's desperately needed, and we need it in targeted locations that are near the three major villages here. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And, yes, back there?
Uh, Sarah Footh, conceived, born, and raised on Salt Spring. Gives me the extra nine months. I'm here to speak in favor of Bylaw, uh, Five Thirty. Uh, twenty years ago, when I was sitting in your seats there as a trustee, we had, uh, a fellow by the name of Tim Wake, who was the housing board, come to us and tell us, without any, uh, uncertainties, because the first thing that Salt Spring should do, facing the housing crisis that we were dealing with twenty years ago, was to legalize all suites and cottages, and then get on with the important issue of dealing with ownership housing. That's what we sort of went through, and that's what we need to go through. So when we're looking at the question of, uh, the ADUs, is it going to have any major impact? All of the evidence indicates as, as the trustee Patrick has pointed out before, it's gonna be very little uptake. And due to the increasing real estate prices, you're gonna see less uptake, because the people that we're seeing that are currently paying a million and a half or two million dollars for a property on Salt Spring, really don't want to tend. So, this is, uh, in my opinion, uh, it should just get on with it. Uh, it should've been done a long time ago, and, uh, I guess it's posing, I just think it's, it's basically much ado above a dues.
Thank you. Uh, yes, here in the front?
My name's Bruce Cameron, and, um, I own and operate a company called Return on Insight. And I founded a company as well in that market research space called, um, uh, Salt Spring Insights. And it's a panel of people on Salt Spring. Um, it's representative. I've been in the business for forty years of public opinion, um, throughout Canada and in the U.S. as well. And, um, a number of the issues here, I'd like to speak to relating to the public opinion that we've picked up since, uh, Salt Spring Insights was founded back in the beginning of twenty-twenty-two. Um, the first and most obvious is housing. Bylaw Five Thirty and anything that can be done to increase the housing supply here among people who actually want to rent to other people, would be absolutely desired by people here. It's the number one, two, and three issue, uh, among Salt Springs. People know that we need more housing. And we need housing not for the people who can afford to come in and buy something for a million and a half. We need people who, uh, housing for people who are going to be the workforce here. Um, so that, that, that's one issue. The other one is the cannabis store. Market research shows that, that, as many other people have shown, there isn't a big enough market here in terms of users of cannabis for, to, to sustain two stores. There just isn't. Uh, the, the numbers are not there. Um, the third thing is the Safe and Clean Harbors Initiative. Um, we were commissioned, Return on Insight, to do a survey about that issue. The, the concept of a safe and safer and cleaner harbor is widely supported across this community. And the polling that we've done, um, is, is accurate. You know, people have questioned online, well, a hundred and sixty-six people, how can that be accurate? Well, you might ask yourself, how can a thousand people in the US represent three-hundred-and-fifty million people? It's because of scientific principles of polling. When you take a sample of blood, you don't take, you drain the whole body of blood and then put it back in. You take a little sample of blood. Now, public opinion's a bit more complicated because there's different places that, where you take the sample. So we, we sample based on gender and age and region on the island to make sure it's representative. And so the, the data that we have reinforces the concerns that have been expressed here about, uh, housing. And, um, and the fact that this Safe and Clean Harbor Initiative can actually legitimize and help provide more housing. Um, again, another solution.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes?
Hi, um, my name is Cherie and I'm here to speak against the proposed expansion and liquor license change for the Salt Spring Island Brewery. Um, I live directly next to the brewery on the other side and have, uh, a young family. I'm deeply concerned regarding the proposed change, um, as currently it is a tasting license which only permits one drink or flight, and they would like to change it to unlimited drinks and spirits as long as the hatred is not overserved. I've worked in the industry for over ten years and despite everyone's best efforts, it is impossible to ensure that no one ever gets overserved. To imagine that this is the case is to be woefully underprepared for the realities of a bar. Alcohol plus dark country roads with no lights and deep, steep ditches combined with tourists who don't know the area means this is not a question of if someone gets hurt, it's when. Several families with young children live here and this expansion is a very real concern for their safety in this quiet rural neighborhood. The brewery proposed e-bike charging stations, but being intoxicated on an e-bike is still drunk driving. There is also the new hop-on bus, which is a great step forward, however relying on a private business that could fold at any time to get your drunk patrons home is not a sustainable solution. I'd also like to recognize that the brewery has put signs up asking people to slow down. However, the signs are non-reflective and the type is too small to read while driving. They are often covered in long grass, which you can see in this photo I took from my car, uh, to show what the signs look like to vehicles. You cannot see them. The brewery has said that they don't want to become a bar, but that's exactly what this proposed expansion is. They're asking us to trust them in a relationship fraught with conflicts with neighbors and zero communication with any of us. Even if we trusted current management, there's been changes in ownership and several changes in management in the last five years, showcasing that these are promises management is unable to make. Currently, Ford Street owns the brewery and with the proposed class action suit against them that has been in the news recently, we have even less trust in their proposed intentions. I'm all for supporting local businesses, but not at the expense of my child's life or the lives of my neighbors.
Hi, my name is Elsie Born and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the Islands Trust for opening the meeting to the public today. I'm here to express my concerns over the proposed expansion of the Salt Spring Island Brewery located at two seven oh furnace. I live at two seven one furnace, an adjacent property to the brewery. I moved here in two thousand nineteen and since that time, we've experienced several brewery waste leaks into our waterways. These leaks are extremely disruptive and smell awful. I have printed copies of their septic system company reports highlighting the needs for several improvements to their septic system and acknowledging their spillage into neighboring waterways. I've also printed copies of my email correspondents with VHA Health Inspectors. When I wrote an email to Louis Hay, the brewmaster, on October seventeenth of two thousand twenty-two, requesting an update in writing, I was met with no response from him or the brewery. I'm concerned that expanding the brewery with an inadequate waste disposal and treatment system may lead to more pollution of our local waterways. These waterways are vital to our farm, my neighbor's farms, as we water our crops and water our livestock from these waters. I would also like to address Rebecca Harden's application for increased seating and a liquor license change. I've included copies of her proposal as well. Has she updated her proposal since our Zoom meeting, uh, with the Islands Trust on April eleventh? At that time, her proposal was inaccurate and false. The first was that would be no need for noise disturbance mitigation since the property had natural vegetation. And during the summer of two thousand twenty-two, the entire property was logged and with all accommodations for staff being torn down. Many trucks full of stones and gravel were brought in, creating an amphitheater-like, uh, structure at the end of our block. This increased the noise of the brewery. I've included pictures for this change review as well. When this point was brought up at the meeting, we were told that there were plans in place for landscaping the brewery. And when we asked to see these plans, we were told no, that we could not, and just to trust them that there were some. In an effort to provide more privacy for ourselves, we have planted trees between us and the brewery, as the brewery now lives directly into my bedroom. Uh, the brewery provides no communication to any of its neighbors about its plans to deforest the property and has become an eyesore at the end of our block with containers, tent-like structures, and porta-potties lining their driveway. Rebecca had a second inaccurate point with the noise disturbance mitigation needing to be considered because the brewery is set in a rural location and not near anyone. I am ninety meters from the brewery. She is ninety meters from the brewery, with her other neighbor being fifty meters from the brewery. We have young children and being open from nine AM to ten PM at night is not acceptable. We do not want a brew pub at the end of our road. Um, we don't see how serving more alcohol to guests, including families, in this equation is safe and a valid business model to move forward with. It's a recipe for disaster. Anyways, thanks, guys. Uh, oh, also Rebecca Harding's letter says that there is a cottage in a four-plex building for staff. This is not true. They've torn everything down. Before the brewery should be able to expand its business, it should have to provide sustainable housing for its employees like in its cottage license that it currently has.
I'm just gonna ask you to conclude.
Yeah. The strong- At the end of the day, I strongly feel the brewery would not be held accountable for any of their choices and we, the people that live here, will be left cleaning up their mess. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dan Winkell, I'm here to support these, uh, the bylaw for the housing there. Um, I'd just like to say how important it was to me was that I had to stop my logging truck down the Rainbow Road way through the day of this. And I don't know if any of you that are standing against this can look at some of the people that are working on this island and look them in the eye and say, there's no place here for you. That, I, I find it shameful. But like, all this is, is just poor planning. And what you're talking about, I sympathize with you. What you're talking about with, about the brewery is an inadequate Islands Trust plan anything. All that they've done is unplanned everything. And when you speak of First Nations, can you speak, can you, uh, point out any of the First Nations in the room? That actually are on, on our traditional territory, live, and have always lived here?
If you're speaking to me-
So, so I'm, so please-
It's not gonna be a personal, uh, inner conversation, so just please-
Okay, so all as I'm saying is, is that the trust needs to get out of the way. Allow commerce to work it out. GBM had to, they worked it out. And if it was something that, that they had to do, they're all serving, serving everyone. So, you know what? Wake up. Stop talking about talking about it and actually do something. How many more meetings do we need to, to come and talk about exactly the same thing that we need? I mean, it's, it's frustrating that I, I've seen the trust here, the trust has been here since the seventies. They sub, but everybody, before the trust came in, everybody's subdivided, madly subdivided, all these small lots. And I can guarantee that those lots, that there's some people in here that are living on those lots, that you, that you would not support right now. So it's just a hypocrisy, the whole thing. And it's time, it's time to wake up and it's time to do something. No more talking about talking about it. Let's do something. Thank you.
You can kick me out. Ah, you can kick me out. Do one, Mary. Okay, uh, was there anyone over in this area? Yes, in the back here.
Hi, I'm Fernando and I was here since two thousand and six. I just go against the, uh, the, uh, building up of the pot store downtown due to like, if we had, uh, tourists coming in and we had that store. And what Cherie was saying that, uh, there's a problem? Can they come again? No, because there's a problem. So one is enough. So I go on serving one, not serving two. That's it.
Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Ian Pettyton. I'm, uh, I'm a baby Salt Springer. I've been here for about four and a half years. Regretfully, I wish it'd been twenty years more than that, so, but I find a living here at the end of my days. Um, I'm here to support the Safe Harbor Initiative, uh, not just from the climate and issues, but from the safety point of view. I've seen, just in the four years I've been here, four, two, four different occasions of boats coming at threat and wandering around the harbor. Sooner or later, a plane's gonna hit one of them, something like that. So I think safety really matters. One of these boats was so submerged, it was maybe this far above the water, almost invisible if there's any kind of shock. So I think it's easy to do. It's not gonna hurt anyone who's legit on the boat. The whole point is not to target anyone, but just to make sure that we got standards up there that are good for the community, good for the harbor, good for tourists to see when they come in. So, thank you.
Okay, and I saw our hand. Uh, yes?
These are some of the observations from a grandparent of three Salt Spring Island children who live here. As a family, we have been boating for over seventy years. And as a result, our family has a huge respect for the ocean and the beaches and, and the environment around that. We even have a marine biologist in our family. And it is really sad to hear my five-year-old grandson refer to the harbor as sunken boat harbor. And beach visits are always to retrieve garbage. Also, as a result, we have become acquainted with a number of very responsible boat dwellers who try their best to clean up. We have given grabbers, safety gears, life jackets, paddles, garbage bags, and even a shovel to scoop poop. And yet, it is a losing battle. Safety of onboard living has also been a big concern. As a community, we have seen drownings, near-drownings, boat explosions, and fires. Many times, I have watched activities with one hand on my phone, ready to call nine-one-one or the Coast Guard. Living on a boat requires knowledge and common sense. This bylaw will start to improve and legalize living on a boat in this harbor. And show a much better respect for the environment and safety. If we don't do that, this whole community and the, in, the enforcement of proper regulations may fall out of our hands. It is my dream to hear my grandson say, "Opah, where have the sunken boats and garbage gone? Let's go swimming." Pass this bylaw for future generations. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Yeah, my name's Andrew Rosen. I'm relatively new to the community, but I do live and watch what happens. I want to give you a little imaginary story for a moment. Soon I am somebody that wants to live on the island or wants to work on the island. I can't find a place to live. So I go find an old dilapidated trailer and I get a friend of mine to tow over here on the ferry and go park it in front of one of your homes. And I start living in there and I start suffocating in there and I have no place to take care of my garbage. I have no place to take care of my sewage. And, and I need firewood to heat my home in the winter. And so I go out into the forest, I cut down trees, like what's going on on Grace Point Island right now. And I'm in front of your home. What are you gonna do about it? The fact is that if you know anything about boating, you cannot live on a boat for more than about a week, at maximum a month, in order not to discharge sewage into the water. It's impossible. There's only three ways to do it, to get rid of it legally. One is take it more than three miles offshore. None of these boats move. The second one is they need to go to the pump-out station that exists at the government dock. They never move. And the third one is to dump it in the, in our water. That's the choice. You guys passed an ordinance in June of two thousand and twenty that required, that said, it's okay to live in the water, but you gotta meet some conditions. There were four of them. They were, your boat had to be registered, had to be insured, had to be seaworthy, and had to be ready for cruising. None of these boats out there can meet that requirement and for three years, you've done absolutely zero in enforcement. Your job as trustees is, one, decide how to spend our tax money. Two, pass laws to make life better for everybody on the island. And third is to enforce that. And if you don't enforce what you've done and the laws that you've adopted, they are worthless. This proposal, for the catchy proposal, is a way to set the standards you need to make this harbor and this island a safe place to live. Thank you.
Yeah, back there.
My name's Kylie. I, uh, like twin-like people, so, um, one of the things is I'm here to speak about the Safe Harbor. Uh, I've been to, uh, a few, been talking to them. One of the things is this is not a way to kick out people living in the harbor. The harbor is now unregulated. There are batteries, there is garbage, there is a mass amount of debris in the harbor and it is, it is just wrecking the harbor. This initiative is designed to stop that. It's an environmental initiative. And the other thing is, is that you wanna talk about slummy landlords? There are boat, people out there that own boats, that are just renting them out for fifty bucks. Some of them don't even own the boat. There was a fire last week in one of the boats. And, uh, you know, it was just, it burns down, goes to the bottom of the ocean and now it sits there. So apparently, when the Coast Guard tried to rescue the person, there was issues. So, you know, the whole thing is the harbor has to be protected. It is the crown jewel of Ganges and it needs to be, to be done. We're trying to get our beautiful harbor lock built. Why are we building that if we have a disgusting harbor to look at? So.
You can't clap if I'm court-
All right, uh, did I miss anybody? It's over here.
Yeah, hi, my name's Andrew Bond. Uh, my family's been here a while. And I just wanna say I support the five thirty. I think rental spaces for, especially for young people in the workforce, everybody that went into the workforce, started somewhere, we all rented. Um, that's how you move forward and, uh, we need those people to fill those positions and, um, and that's just, I just wanted to say I support it. Thank you, that's it.
Can I by the door here?
My name is Dan Dickmeyer. I've been here since two thousand nine. Uh, I read the entire bylaw yesterday, stopped and went back a couple of times about the issue of this so-called tax that's gonna fund whatever. Um, I don't understand how that could get through this process without a big discussion about what's this tax thing gonna be? Why is it gonna be a, like somehow administered by the federal? None of that made any sense and I'm not the only one. They need, you need to find out how much tax money is gonna be raised, how this is gonna work. Is the trust gonna respond to the charity or the charity to the trust? To me, in my mind, it's just mind-boggling and there was very little space in that bylaw. You have tons and tons of little regulations. You have even a court case from Kelowna to prove your point, but what about this tax? I had no understanding about how you create a tax without a, a hearing. The end.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, back there.
My name is Robert Steinbeck and I, uh, am here to ask the trustees to turn down the application for the second cannabis store downtown. In the last year, we spent a lot of resources trying, uh, to renew and revitalize Ganges, our new murals, the huge efforts of the RCMP to deal with centennial part homeless, um, and a lot of transient population. And I fail to see how a second cannabis store, um, is gonna contribute- And I fail to see how a second cannabis store, um, is going to contribute to the vibrancy of our village, to contribute to the economic well-being of all the businesses downtown. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, is there anyone else who wanted to speak before we move on?